The Mayor graciously has accepted our invitation and will be making a few opening remarks about the settlement agreement. And then he will be leaving for a very important and personal commitment. I want to thank Mayor Mary for being with us this evening. And I will truly applaud her for being here, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Council President Sanchez. Councillors, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to come down. It's an important meeting. It's an important time for us in the city of Albuquerque, for our police department, for our citizens, all individuals who have been engaged, very robust, and as I said over the course of discussion in our community for the past several years. I commend you, Council Sanchez and the councillors, for meeting tonight. This is something we gave you or a word that before we signed this agreement, that we would bring this to the community, or we do bring this to the council. And let the community have a discussion about this. And we are doing it. So I'm pleased that this meeting is happening tonight. I know that we've got some experts. Scott Greenwood was here with us this evening, our special councillor. We've got Tom Stryker here as well, as our staff. And they'll be able to answer specific questions about this meeting. What I'd like to do is address some overarching themes that I think are important. One of the themes that is important with the agreement itself is that we really worked hard. Chief V, Chief Huntsman, the men and women of the Department of Justice, both the US Attorney's Office and those who came from Washington, and our experts to craft an agreement that we believe strongly will work. That we believe will provide reforms that will also allow officers to be safe in their duties, that will help our community, members of our community, be safe. And it will also help build a really critical and important part of this dialogue to our community, that is community engagement. I said when we had the press conference at the Department of Justice, that there are a lot of technical things in this agreement that Mr. Greenwood, Tom Stryker, and others can talk about, some of the specifics. But if we do just that, if we just do the technical things and we don't build this dialogue still wide that we think that lasts from generation to generation, from mayor to mayor, from chief to chief, from council to council, from community members and their families to others along the road, we won't reach the greatest that we want long-term in the community. We've seen examples around the country where that has happened. So I have a lot of faith in our community that we can do that. I have a lot of confidence in this agreement. I know we'll have a lot of folks speaking on this tonight. But it really was crafted in a way that we think will work, that's measurable. That when the monitor comes in, we will have someone who can actually see a roadmap in place. And it's not overly subjective, but yet it's a living document that allows us an opportunity to make changes in conjunction with DOJ as time goes on. I commend the council for the police oversight board that you put into place and that I signed a couple of weeks ago. I think that is a hugely important piece of this opportunity that we have in front of us as well. I certainly encourage everybody in our community to visit our website at cubq.gov and go to the Mayor's Corner. That's where you can find out where our community collaborative meetings are. Those are ongoing. Those will be a continuing effort in our community as well as our community meeting councils. We had our first kickoff meeting with those community police councils last week. And I think that's another great opportunity for us. I would urge the council to support us in this agreement for a couple of specific reasons. You've been a big part of this equation as we've gone through this over the last several years. Not just with the police oversight board, but you are the appropriators for the city of Albuquerque. And this agreement, as I've said, it won't be easy. It's a difficult thing to do. And it's not going to be inexpensive. But it's important that we do it and we do it right. And we need you as appropriators to be there. And you have been for us. And we appreciate that you, with the bill that passed at the last meeting, to allow some retention dollars. So once again, I commend you for having the meeting. And I commend everybody in our community that's come out to voice your opinions and give us your feedback. And I think we have a tremendous opportunity in front of us. And I have very confidence that as a council, as an administration, and department, as a community, that we can make great strides. And so thank you for allowing me to come down and say a few words.
Mayor, thank you very much for taking the time and being here with us this evening. Civic plaza parking passes are provided for members of the public. You can obtain a parking pass from the council staff at the sign-up tables. The council will take a dinner break this evening at approximately 7:00 PM. I want tonight's proceedings to be as civil and respectful as possible. Please do not make any personal attacks. Please move forward with the meeting during the meeting. The meeting will go a lot smoother if we are respectful of one another. For that, I want to make a few comments about the decorum this evening. There will be absolutely no signs, props, posters, or banners allowed in the chambers, other than which can be displayed on the overhead during the presentation. No sheets larger than eight and a half by eleven. Such materials shall not be held or weighed in a manner that blocks the view of others or creates a distraction from the speakers from the business at hand. Items displayed on the overhead projector must be removed from the projector at the end of that person's public comment. Only the individuals whom the council president has called upon to provide public comment may stand at the podium. Most persons will not be permitted to stand behind the presenter. The only exception will be for those who need a translator or reasonable accommodations to provide public comment. The two-minute time limit for public comment will strictly be enforced. Public comments must be directed to the council through the council president, not his staff or members of the audience. There will be no tolerance for disruptive public comments. The handicapped landing area on the right side of the dais must be kept clear at all times. Those who desire to report the meeting will be directed to the landing area on the left side of the dais. The fire marshal will strictly enforce ingress and egress rules so as to ensure public safety. I will provide, provide one warning to anyone positive for disruption. Upon a second or continuous disruption, that individual will be asked to leave the council chambers and a necessary security will be asked to escort that person out of the chambers. Such removals from the council chambers will affect us for the remainder of the meeting. If continued disruption occurred, I may recess the meeting until order is restored and, if necessary, may clear the chambers of persons participating in the disruption. At this time, we are under administrative questions and ask for a very quick statement. See you now, please, for over two hours. Councilor Gordon. There will be plans in the government operations committee on Monday, November the 10th, at 5:00 PM in the council chamber. Councilor Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. There will be a meeting of the TID Board next Thursday at, excuse me, next Monday at 12:00 PM in the council chamber. And all of that will be a vessel soul improvement district at 12:30, excuse me, at 12:30 in the council committee room.
Councilor President.
There will be a landings planning and zoning committee meeting on Wednesday, November 12th, at 5:00 PM in the council committee room.
Thank you, Councilor Gordon, for your attention. We are now under approval. That is the only item on the agenda this evening. And that is item A, that is EC 194, the settlement agreement between the Department of Justice and the city of Albuquerque. And I move to do pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We are going to go to a public comment. And tonight's meeting is a special meeting. So if anyone is going to speak under this item, it has to be germane to the settlement agreement. If you deviate from that, I will ask you to please get back on the subject. And if not, I will ask you to please step away from the podium. There will be a two-minute time limit. The light on the podium will be green for the first minute and a half. Then they have a ring and the light will turn yellow. When the key, you have 30 seconds remaining to wrap up your comments. You've got the two-minute time. It will turn red and that will indicate your time has expired. And the first four speakers, I will call once your name has been called. I would ask you to come to the front of the chambers and be prepared to speak. Tony Perard, Stephen Torres, Mary Fox, and Tad Deminsky. Welcome.
I can't believe what I constantly hear about this crooked, corrupt corporate judicial system consent decree. First of all, it's my understanding that Scott Greenwood has never had a license to practice law and has no business signing a letter of agreement with the DOJ on my behalf. Scott Greenwood is a niche consultant who should also be arrested for fraud along with wife beater Tom Stryker. There are so many things not mentioned in this decree that people need to wake up and object to it completely. With all due respect to the activist group who have fought for change and the citizens of Albuquerque, APD will never move forward until cop killers are fired and removed from the force and go to jail. And to the DOJ, I won't have some child pretending to be an assistant prosecuting district attorney dictating policy to me about the consent decree. You do not have my consent. I refuse to give you my consent as long as other law enforcement, FBI, US Marshals, sheriffs, and DOJ refuse to make felony arrests. It's time for the ICE will stop for no cop campaign. The so-called chief and other officers constantly say they're abiding by constitutional law. All in law enforcement had better understand their oath of office instead of hiding behind the Constitution. Pick up a book and read the Constitution. It's going to be my mission to see your corrupt world fall. Killer cops go to jail. There will be no justice, no peace. Pardon? This is about the consent decree. And I don't appreciate you interrupting me. May I have 20 more seconds, please?
I'll give you 15 additional seconds.
Thank you. So pick up a book and read and it's going to be my mission to see your corrupt world fall. Killer cops go to jail. No justice, no peace. America, pick up a book, read the Constitution, Bill of Rights, and Declaration of Independence. For all three documents, work together to defend our rights.
Next speaker, Stephen Torres, followed by Mary Fox, followed by Tad Deminsky. Welcome, Mr. Torres.
Good evening, Council President Sanchez, members of the city council, supporters, friends, citizens of Albuquerque. It is not an understatement to say that this is a historic moment in the history of this council and this city. I would like to take advantage of this opportunity to thank a lot of people who have put in a lot of effort to make this evening happen and to make this consent decree happen. A lot of people have been working for a long time. People who have joined us in rallies, demonstrations, telephone calls, letters, emails to the DOJ, people who have marched in protest marches, people who have risked being arrested, and especially those people who eventually get arrested. All to demonstrate and bring light to this serious problem and to try and bring about some solution to that problem. So I want to thank all of those people, all of those people who made this consent decree happen. I was skeptical this day would ever happen. Two years ago, if you had asked me if we were ever going to get it, I probably would have bet you anything you wanted to bet it wasn't going to happen. But it did. And it was thanks to the presence of, again, as I said, a lot of people around the city, around the state, around the country, people who sent in letters and emails from foreign countries, all because they were aware of the problem that we had here and that there needed to be a solution to that problem. I want to thank you, members of the council, for allowing us an opportunity to come and speak before you regularly, even when we said things you knew weren't here. But thank you for allowing us the opportunity to come, to speak, to vent. There's a lot of work that we still need to do. I hope we can all join together and see this thing through to a proper finish. Again, thank you, members of the council. Thank you, citizens of Albuquerque. And let's go forward and pretty good.
Councilor Deminsky. Mr. Torres. Councilor Deminsky has a question, please.
Yes, I have a question. Torres, I just wanted to say, I've said it in the past, but I'd like to say it again, so it's on record. I'm very sorry for what's happened to your family. Sorry for the pain that you've gone through. But I sincerely want to thank you for having the courage and the ability to come before us and tell us how you feel in the fact that you think that there are opportunities for us to move forward in a positive way. But again, maybe I want to tell you, excuse me, I'm sorry for what's happened to your family.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Torres, I have a couple of comments. I've known you and Renata for such a long time and your entire family. And I would also like to express my condolences for your loss. And I want to thank you for having the courage to be at several of these community meetings. And it took a lot of courage to go out, talk to members of the DOJ, talk to the members of the public, and also coming to the Albuquerque City Council for several years, expressing your concerns. But I know that your voice was listened to and heard. And I know the DOJ implemented a lot of the recommendations during the settlement because of your efforts and your work.
It wasn't just my efforts. There were a lot of people behind us, a lot of people who deserve a lot more thanks and honor than we do, but thanks.
But it was a collaborative effort by a lot of people. And I want to thank you for leading that charge in many ways. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Mary Fox, Tad Deminsky. Welcome, Mary.
Thank you for letting me speak. I just recently moved to Albuquerque, in fact, about a year and a half ago, in a rough spot in Kansas. And of course, a lot of my friends said, "You're moving where?" But I think there's much promise here. I'm kind of saddened as I read what I read here because it's an opportunity I've had to steal. A more humane, warm, encouraging approach to the training of these young people who are going into the workforce. They face death every day. They face dirty words. They face all kinds of things. But their approach is so important, too. It's important for them to give everybody a chance as we intend to give to them. I hope that some of that was we added to this, a more humane, open, you know, saying to these people, "There's a lot going on out there. There are a lot of people have a lot of problems, a lot of pressure, a lot of struggles. You're not here as a guest sample. You are here to contribute to the well-being and the success of Albuquerque." That pretty much says what I got to say.
Well, thank you. Tad Deminsky. Carol Pino Mottor. And Pablo Reyes.
Thank you. Many, Ted Deminsky. Well, we have to give the credit where credit belongs. As credit belongs to Mayor? Well, I have to think about it. I don't believe credit belongs to all those people protesting, marching, went on the street.
Would you please address the councilperson, Deminsky?
I'm sorry?
Please address the council.
Okay, thank you. I will. Well, it is a historic moment. Now, it is a lot more needs to be done than began. How much that will be done? I was last week at federal court. That was officer trial. Lea Kelly, no remorse. Cold, he is cold-blooded killer. That's how I can describe her. No remorse, no emotion. There was clotting statement, just cold. To the interrogation, she made statement, "If that will happen again, I won't do anything differently." She's walking back. Here is message to cheat, mail, it is on the record. Take her to do something because, but already tomorrow lawsuit coming up against her. At least I know. So anyway, she's working for what? She's working for, excuse me, just a second. CIT and COAST. That's the reason, I think. And thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Carol Pino Mottor. Welcome back.
Good evening, men and women. I believe if most of us understood that situation we're in today historically and in reference to what was established during the revolutionary era, we would understand that this settlement agreement is a hoax and a charade. The problems we have with the local police departments stem from the US Department of Bogus Justice. Today, the authority of the people has been co-opted by instituting a municipal corporation on top of what was the lawful government. The sheriff was supposed to be the chief executive officer of the county. The sheriff now takes orders from bar association operatives, just as everyone else does. The jury systems are supposed to be under the control of the people through the sheriff's authority. Today, they are under the control of the bar association operatives. And this American Bar Association is a rogue organization that makes sure that any person who has the authority of a licensed attorney, whether at venture or bar, is under the thumb of those who control the American Bar Association. Who is or who are those who control the Federal Reserve, banks, the cartel, and all its economy that it affects. If we, the people, do not reassert our authority per the principles of the Declaration of Independence, we are looking for, or we looking forward to, an all-out authoritarian murderous, they call it a police state. It has nothing to do with the police at the local level. It has to do with the people at the top who patrol us. And as one man actually put it, appealing to the US Department of Bogus Justice is like appealing to the chief of the bandits to correct the bandits. We have rogue police officers, but they're positioned on purpose. They are not there by accident.
Thank you.
We're getting rid of good people on purpose.
Mr. Torres, thank you.
Yeah, I know you don't have that much time for other than official pronouncements.
Again, this is Mr. Torres. Please hold your applause. Pablo Reyes, Roger Mickelson, Francis Koenzberg, and Jennifer Roebuck.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm here to address the city council. Okay, I'm here to address the city council of Ford City. I was dealing with the police oversight commission and their supervised training about four years ago. And I'm here to let the city council know that we can pull through with the settlement agreement. I'm going to need some help. I've notified the city council and the board of county commissioners. Hiding behind concrete and not listening to what people's going to say, that people are going to say is not going to work. I feel ladies frustration. So when we come before you, I'd appreciate some help. I'm going to continue filing papers in our local courts and our county courts for additional help. And I'm here to let you know we can pull through with the settlement. Thank you very much.
Thank you, your time. Roger Mickelson, Francis Koenzberg, Jennifer Roebuck, and Barbara Bogus. Welcome, everybody.
Thank you, Council President, councillors. I've read through the agreement. I've not read every word. There's a great amount of detail in there. I've read the summary, which I believe to be accurate. I think the time has come to work together and restore some mutual respect, trust, and confidence between our protectors in law enforcement and the public they serve. In our representative republic, our elected officials have worked hard to finalize the agreement, come up with rational ways of approaching this to balance civil rights of the public and the needs of law enforcement to maintain law and order. It's now time to find common ground, probably a step at a time, rather than dissension, criticism, and anger. We have to implement some rational, appropriate changes to reach the agreed goal. That's to give full respect to the council. Thank you for your work. I hope this implementation of this agreement has done a good, great here in the House. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Koenzberg. Jennifer Roebuck. Welcome.
Good evening, members of the council, councillors, and members of the city council. I've been before you for other reasons. I am now affiliated with APD Forward, which is the first partnership of 17 organizations and individuals who are committed to maintaining, if you will, public oversight of the processes that unfold. We had a press conference yesterday where lawyers who are working with APD Forward presented some of their analysis. There are many good things about the agreement, which can be a roadmap to a way forward to create public safety and officer safety. A few of those things, there are a few reasons, standards for the applicants for APD require manual use of force report, higher level of accountability, and higher levels of supervision, more supervisors in the field, and commitment to protect officers who come forward to tell the truth about incidents that they've observed. I've got four points that I want to make to you all tonight about things that I think are serious enough that we might need to think about what we're doing in this and make recommendations to the DOJ and the administration. First, use of cameras is an excellent thing and it's certainly progressive in the country. However, there is no mandatory serious discipline for failure to comply with the camera requirement, which the APD Forward legal panel thinks is a huge problem. There are, SWAT is going to be, there's going to be admission for SWAT. Everything has to be cleared. However, there is no criteria to govern SWAT deployment, which has left APD to develop. We've got some concerns about the monitor. I appreciate that everybody's on this fast track. However, I think it's really important that the person be an expert and qualified. And I would really hope that you would implore the parties not to hire somebody within 60 days, just to hire somebody within 60 days. The role is critical. It is too important. And it'll be, it'll take a national search to find an appropriate person. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Roebuck.
Thank you, Mayor Mary, for saving our city. Many of these shootings are speech to profit. APD shootings have been the top criminal racket by domestic terrorists being paid by foreign entities to destroy our New Mexico police departments. And I encourage you, take your time waiting this settlement agreement. Two officers just died in mysterious circumstances. Our US government officials and employees, including active-duty military police, firefighters, veterans, civic leaders, and their families have become targets with multimillion-dollar bounty on their heads. These uniformed men have been loyal to you. I ask you to be loyal to them, okay? These terrorists are not cute little buddies, okay? When all these shootings happened, these people were not marching over to the homeless shelter to be cooking dinners for homeless, okay? These people were doing hardcore criminal acts. Many of them had the wrong license plate on their vehicles, okay? This is organized crime at its worst. And I will always continue to defend Albuquerque Police Department because they defended me and my family. My mother's a military widow, okay? I'm targeted every day of my life. When I leave this building, I'm going to be targeted. I'm going to have people following me. I'm not scared. You want to know why? Because I have the officers of Albuquerque Police Department to scare off all of my gang stalkers, okay? And I want to tell you something. I need you to remember Tara Chavis, okay?
Hold on just a moment. Mr. Perard, I'm going to give you a warning. And the next time I give you a warning, you're going to be removed from the chambers. Go on through, and I'll give you 15 more seconds.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. I want you to remember Tara Chavis. She was gang stalked and murdered, okay? If a police officer's wife had been murdered in that fashion, what about our families, okay? My dad, okay, served this nation honorably. He suffered, okay, in the Vietnam War. I'm asking you, please, be loyal to the taxpayers of this city. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time. Barbara Bogus, Diana Barkus, Nora Naya, and Reverend Torres.
No, you're off topic.
Uh-huh.
This is your second one.
Thank you for this opportunity to allow the citizens to breathe, to make comments about this consent decree. We are still mistrustful despite the fact that we want this to be a useful process. Yeah, we still have these killer police on our horse. People who've killed multiple times are still there. We don't like it. It doesn't seem right. And I guess I just want to say that my, you know, my biggest concern about the... And I guess I just wanna say that my, you know, my biggest concern about...one of my big concerns about this whole process is that we're still talking about training police officers with some sort of mental health practice. I don't think that's sufficient. We should have trained mental health workers on-call for these kinds of events. It's not enough to just train the police a little bit and how to deal with some mental health issues. This is a profession. We used to do this. You should talk Representative Kanieta Valdez to wear a pager back in the day, and they brought people like him to the scene of these kinds of incidents. And it was a much better system than what we are going to have with a little bit of training for our police. So, I really urge you to look at that and to find a way to put some tea into these agreements about cameras and things like this. We don't...I mean, there's just no hope that the police are gonna use cameras if they don't have some kind of punishment for not doing it. Just turn it off, have it removed, and then turn it back on once the people are out of the way, dead, or round it up. Anyway, thank you again. I would like to hope this is gonna be a good process. We definitely need to get a confident input from these people not to be continuing with your supervising this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right on, Barbara.
Diana Vargas.
Hi there. I specifically wanted to talk about the monitor because I wanna be able to have faith in that process because I absolutely didn't have any faith in the actual negotiations for obvious reasons, because there was more than a conflict of interest with Tom Stryker and Scott Greenwood with their dealings with Asia International, the city of Albuquerque, and the list goes on, so you can see where the distress comes from. So, actually, we do not, though I consent to Tom Stryker or Scott Greenwood. I hope when they're done kicking us out, they just head on home. And so, I'd ask that you not rush the process of trying to find that monitor because I think it took a really long time for us to even get to this point, and to rush that process, it just...it wouldn't make any sense whatsoever. I'd ask that we consider people inside our own state and within our own city because I do believe that there are people here because our state in itself has a very rich culture and a very complicated past dating back since before this was in Mexico territory. So, I'd ask that you not rush the consent decree...oh, or I'm sorry, the monitor decision. And please do not hire Hillard and Hines, who I suspect Tom Stryker and Scott Greenwood would recommend, seeing as how they try to recommend them in Cincinnati, Ohio, when a federal judge had to intervene stating that they had no real experience whatsoever. I'm tired of people coming to our state and building their resumes off of our back. And if we can ensure that, that would be great. And I have this for the mayor, but he's always gone. So, fatal leadership is where this got us here, specifically Mayor Barry himself, and he will never know exactly what he did to this state and this city, and shame on Mayor Barry. And for the rest of you, good luck, and I hope to work with each and every single one of you.
Thank you.
Except Don.
Nora Anaya. Nora Anaya. You're Reverend Trey Hammond. And then Stephanie Bogus.
Thank you. My name is Nora Takia Sanaya. Thank you for allowing me to speak, Councilor. I'm here to tell you that I feel in the same way as everyone else. I do not consent. This has all been on secret. This has all been behind closed doors, and that is not acceptable. I believe that that is being sneaky, underhanded, and sweeping everything under the carpet as usual. I do not appreciate that I have to speak to you the way I do, but I believe that this is important for you to know how we feel. We can stand in the street corners and speak and say, "No justice, no peace." We can do everything we can to make you understand that this is not the way to work with your constituents. This is not. Although you believe that it is, we are behind everything that we say. We are standing strong, and we are not gonna waver. What I think is really improper is there has been shootings. They shot Boyd Matthew, James Matthew Boyd in the groin. They tried to shoot him in the groin. Then already shot Vincent Wood. They shot him in the testicles, and they had no way to find any of the remains. This is unacceptable. Please understand, this is not just a culture of brutality. This is a cult, and you need to understand that you're working with more than what you think. This is demonizing themselves by doing what they're doing, shooting in the back, shooting innocent people.
Thank you very much. Reverend Trey Hammond. Captain Bogus.
President Sanchez, City Councilors. My name's Trey Hammond. I'm the pastor of La Mesa Presbyterian Church. I'm the co-chair of Albuquerque Interfaith, an organization comprised of twenty-five congregations, schools, unions, and nonprofits. I encourage the city leadership, as it enacts the consent decree, to not only meet the letter of the law in its implementation, but the spirit of the law and the creation of a better, safer, and more just Albuquerque, and a more responsive and resourceful police department to serve and protect the community. I'm here to speak specifically to portions of the consent decree that deal with issues of mental health and addiction. We, as a society, and Albuquerque as a city, have woefully inadequate services for persons experiencing mental illness and those who struggle with crippling addictions. We have had hundreds of conversations in our institutions and their families all over the city with heart-reaching stories of how hard it is to get help for the people they love. We understand that the police and firefighters are often called to difficult situations with people experiencing paranoia or drug-induced hallucinations, too often these situations have not unfolded well. An excessive force was employed when the situation could have had a better outcome if skilled personnel, experts working in such crises, have been on the scene attempting to de-escalate the situation. Therefore, the full funding of A.P.D.'s crisis intervention unit has to be a priority for victims. Our understanding is that there have been as many as nine detectives, permanent detectives, assigned to that unit, but now there are only three permanent detectives. The consent decree suggests that twelve might be the appropriate staffing. In my estimation, there's no reason to wait to fully staff this unit and deploy it in a crisis situation. We are, as a city and A.P.D., to take necessary measures to get those detectives hired, trained, and employed to make us safer. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Reverend Ann. Stephanie Bogus. And the last speaker will be Stephen Cray.
Senator Sanchez, City Council. I just wanted to come take the time to tell you thank you for the work that you do and you put in as well, and two, thank you for passing the MOU, and wanted you...to remind you how well that worked when you seen the three of us work together from the association, the city department, the city administration, and the department administration. We know this hundred-and-five-page report is lengthy, and there's a lot of changes that we can make. Having spoken with the DOJ ourselves as an association, they advise us that there's never been a department who's been able to do any type of completion to go on a self-monitoring system over two years. Well, I would like for us to be that first department, as hard-hitting as this revision is on what needs to be done. I believe a lot of people that have come to speak to you before me first, because it is time to move forward. Provisions have already been made of what's expected of the department. I don't think that there's nothing that the department can't do, other than stopping the issue and being able to work together again. I mean, it's great when we can all work together and complete it that much more quicker because if we can accomplish this in two years, that would be a great achievement for this department, as well as our city and our community. We want to do the best that we can in instilling the trust and respect that this community has for our officers once again, and we would hope that the community realizes that officers are given an order, and orders that are given must be followed. We all have a job to do, and we hope that they would consider that the job that we're doing is to the best of our ability and to keep the community safe. I think if we can work together through this, the association wouldn't need to be the bad guy in some aspects of it, but I think if we continue to work the way we were when it was getting put together and formed, there are going to be problems, and I want you to hear it from me, myself, first, that if it does get to that problem, I want you to know that I am making my very, very best effort to work with the city administration and the department administration to be able to move forward and get this done at any time in the night.
Thank you, Ms. Koenzberg. And I have a comment, Ms. Koenzberg, and I want to firstly say thank you for your work of the police department and your union. I had an opportunity to attend a couple of meetings with some of the police officers and union members. I know that was a very heated meeting, but I think it was a very good dialogue, and it was input both from the members of the Department of Justice and also your officers. So, the DOJ did allow for input from police officers, and I want to thank you for setting these things up.
Thank you very much, President Sanchez.
Next speaker is Dean Cray. Welcome.
Thank you, Councilor. I appreciate that it's something that Stephanie just said. I'd like to just mention it's not accurate directly. It's the two years instead of the typical four to six. It's an interesting concept because I'm coming before you guys tonight to ask you to not support the decrees that stand because a lot of people, or a few people tonight, and I mean no disrespect to the Torres family or Mr. Torres, but I don't find the agreement to be historic beyond the fact it's a historic boom-dawg. It's a work, it's a jobs program for the friends of the administration. There's nothing in it that has made the community happy at all. There's been no one outside of the administration or the people that worked on it that are pleased with it. A.P.D. Forward has problems, and they're a part of an odd organization. It's really just a watered-down...it's exactly what we hired Mr. Greenwood and Tom Stryker to give us. It's a watered-down agreement that's pretty much a copy, boilerplate paper from other agreements, and it does nothing really preventative in our city. So, I don't see any reason to spend that much money over a period of four to six years when we're talking about...it's gonna be between seven and twelve million dollars for the monitor, and that is the big game here, and that's what's been at play. But if we're gonna spend the next four years executing a decree, we should note that it's really good and that the community really supports it, and the community doesn't support this. There's been no support, I'm assuming, from the Department of Forward for it. And along those lines, as Martin said earlier, I would like to speak about the monitor, too, because it's a very important process. The DOJ has said it's a key step in the process, and we need to be really careful about who we're picking. I don't have the faith that Mr. Stryker and Greenwood can help us negotiate that choice, given the fact that they have been employed by Hillard and Hines when they tried through the New Orleans contract. And I was able to speak with Mr. Martinez on Friday and brought this question up, and he, you know, he said that they weren't qualified, but U.S. District Attorney Stephen Parker there said they weren't qualified.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How does it inspire you? Please hold your applause. We will now have a presentation for Mr. Greenwood and Mr. Stryker regarding the settlement agreement with the Department of Justice and A.P.D. and the implementation of the agreement.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of council. Tonight really is a watershed moment for the city of Albuquerque. With the negotiation, the conclusion of the negotiation of the settlement agreement between the city of Albuquerque and the United States, this community finally has an opportunity to move in one direction. The administration, the mayor, in partnership with the police department and the Department of Justice and members of the communities that make up this city, to achieve our mutual goals and to achieve our mission. We had, as the underlying principles that run throughout this agreement, three things that are really kind of themes, and we've discussed these privately, but I think it's important to discuss them publicly, too. Core values that are embodied throughout this agreement include protection of community safety and officer safety, promoting fully effective and fully constitutional policing, and providing high-quality, high-level police services to people of Albuquerque. Those underlie and run throughout all nine merit of major areas of this agreement. And make no mistake, this agreement is not a cookie-cutter agreement or cut and paste. It is the result of hundreds of hours of negotiation, crafting, putting together an agreement by members of the police department's leadership, by the city's team, the city attorney's office, and the administration. And it is very specifically tailored to leverage the strengths of this community and this police department and to address the issues that are in the Justice Department's findings there. So, what it does is to do certain things throughout the agreement in these nine major sections. The biggest component of the agreement is the one that really led us here in the first place. It's the provisions on use of force. That really is the heart of the agreement. And under this agreement, there will be major changes in how the department uses force, trains on force, reports on force, and investigates on force. One key change is that we're creating a serious use of force designation so that higher level or higher quantities of force are reported and investigated differently and differently than they were in the past. That is a hugely significant achievement. There are changes to policies on how electronic-controlled weapons are used. For the first time, there will be cycle and duration limits for A.P.D. and a discontinuation in the use of that weapon for compliance purposes. The department previously implemented, at Chief Eaton's direction, a uniform weapons policy to promote officer and public safety, and the agreement memorializes that. Now, for the first time, force reporting will be much stronger under the agreement than it previously was. All officers will have to report uses of force by themselves and other A.P.D. personnel. And when force is investigated, it's going to be investigated, not in a cursory way, but it's gonna be investigated first by the frontline supervisors, those are the sergeants, and then the serious uses of force will be investigated by Internal Affairs. That's very, very different from what it was in the past, and that's a real core of the agreement. And then, all uses of force will go up the chain of command and will arrive at the desk of the Assistant Chief and the Chief within twenty-four hours, at least that preliminary report. And when it's finished, an investigation of any use of force, all uses of force, will go to the Force Review Board. That's a new entity that we're creating in this agreement to review all uses of force. There's a lot more training in this agreement on use of force than A.P.D.-provided officers in the past. They're gonna get forty hours on use of force training instead of two hours, or the minimum that would be required under state law. The agreement leverages A.P.D.'s strength already on behavioral and mental health and makes this department the first one in the country to have universal training of all officers on CIT, and then enhanced levels of responders, a mental health advisory committee to work with the department, to work with the city on formulating and evaluating responses. The agreement, very specifically, does some things with the tactical units. It provides clear direction for command and control for SWAT. It disbands the decision of the chief. It disbands the repeat offender unit, and it requires that all tactical deployments are examined. They will have missions, but they will also have examination after the fact and debriefing so that the department and personnel can learn from all incidents. Training runs throughout the agreement. There are something like a hundred and twenty different...a hundred and twenty hours that most A.P.D. officers will undergo in the first year of the agreement, and that is to reorient them, to give them the skills and the tools that they need to police consistent with the goals of the agreement. Constitutionally, protecting their safety, the safety of members of the community, emphasizing de-escalation, problem-solving. The agreement also does critical things with misconduct investigations. It sets up two parallel processes, both inside the department, that's the Internal Affairs provisions, and then officers will carry complaint forms. They'll be available all over the city. And then, the civilian oversight agency that you created a month and a half ago has become a much stronger form of civilian oversight and will have a hands-on role in investigating allegations of misconduct. Now, that is consistent with national best practices. The agreement calls for us to do something that hasn't been done in a very long time. It's to take a look at the staff... Now, that is consistent with national best practices. The agreement calls for us to do something that hasn't been done in a very long time. It's to take a look at the staffing, and it's to determine not just raw numbers, but it is to look at the staffing in all of the areas that are touched on by the agreement. That will help us determine moving forward, if APD has the right personnel in the right places, are you deploying resources in the right way. We also create here in the agreement a requirement for it earlier in the bench system that works with the Internal Affairs system in place to identify certain factors that trigger early intervention by a personnel supervisor so that people who make correctable errors in their careers can receive education, instruction, reorientation, so that those don't become the things that cut short their careers, and to protect the community from having incidents of misconduct that rise to a critical level. This is the first agreement in the country that expressly requires the use of on-body recording systems. That leverages this city's decision to become really the first large jurisdiction to have a very large-scale deployment of those devices. And it has a component in this provision of the agreement that requires the department to come back in the city after a review of its existing practices and the study being done by UNM to come back with recommendations to the community. And then finally, it has a huge section on community engagement that's really pretty atypical for one of these agreements. It has provisions for meetings in each area command, a requirement for all APD personnel to attend public and community meetings. It recognizes the community policing councils established by the mayor. And then it expressly recognizes the civilian police oversight agency that you created. That is a very high level of community engagement and oversight that hasn't been contemplated in these agreements in the past. Now, I'd like to ask Chief Striker to talk about what happens when a department begins implementing an agreement like this. This will be a particular.
Please hold your seats, Chief Striker.
Thank you, Scott. Good evening to all council members and the people that are here present this evening. I think what's critical for everyone to know and to understand is that a settlement agreement like we've reached here in Albuquerque presents a real opportunity as well as a real challenge to the city and the community itself. From inside the city itself and more specifically the police department, the settlement agreement requires collection of enormous amount of data. And not just to collect that data, put it in a box, and sit it somewhere, save it for a future date, but actually requires the agency itself to analyze that data so that they constantly hands their hands on what are best practices, what perhaps are not best practices, and what may need immediate attention so it can be improved throughout the, throughout the agency itself. That data itself is also accessible to the community so the community can continue to analyze the activity that performs to conduct their police department and bring to the city matters, matters that they believe need, need attention immediately from the city, from the police administration to help correct the activity of officers or to help provide additional training. When we talk about training, we meet, we think that the enhanced training is critically important here because we're hiring police officers to do a very specific task, and that task is very difficult. Difficulty is that they are being challenged and confronted with all the different problems that are in a society at this point in time. Officers are not experts in every field. They can't expect to be experts in every field. They certainly can't expect to be able to address everything that confronts them, something that Scott talked about, people with mental health issues or people with substance abuse issues. Not all officers have been afforded training in the past, therefore they can't be expected to have all the answers that they need when they're addressing someone with mental health issues, substance abuse issues, or whatever else they can be confronted with. The idea in this, in this settlement agreement is to give them those, those abilities in part by affording them additional training, but also to bring people who have those skills, who have the education and skill level necessary to address these types of situations. So it's very conceivable that at some point in the future, we could receive a call for assistance and a police officer would respond along with mental health professionals, and the mental health professionals are the ones that are actually addressing these situations, and the police officers simply providing a secure environment for that, for that profession to work in. This is a, this is a drastic change in the way policing has been done historically in America, and it's something that the city of Albuquerque certainly is going to embark and we believe is going to make a tremendous difference. Finally, I think what is critically important here also is that the review of incidents, particularly critical incidents, is no longer going to be looked at from the perspective of whether we were right or whether we were wrong in the action that was taken by an officer. The reality of what's going to be occurring in the future is a comprehensive examination of everything, from the very inception of that contact between a citizen and one of our police officers and following all the way through to the very end, to do a truly, true, truly, true critique of the incident to find out whether or not just what happened is appropriate or not appropriate, whether it matches the standards that are in place by the law and by policy and procedure, but to draw out of this incident lessons, to provide options to officers in future training settings that may help alleviate the need for officers to use deadly force or to use any type of force at all. This is what's critically important for this city, for this police administration, to help these officers develop skills that better, that better prepare them to address the situations that they're going to be confronted with in the future. We know this has happened before. We know it's occurring now. We know it's going to occur in the future. So why not take the lessons that are available and apply them to our training that we provide these officers now and in the future to make Albuquerque a much better city and to improve the quality of life for everybody this year in Albuquerque? That's what this is all about.
Before we get to questions, Mr. President, we'd like to announce, as we move towards the implementation of this agreement, that the very well-respected Dr. Harold Bailey has joined our team to work with us and to work with the community on implementation. Now, Dr. Bailey is here. Would you like to say a few words with the rest of the council?
Welcome, Dr. Bailey. Thank you for your.
Mr. President, distinguished members of the committee, I'd like to say thank you very much for this opportunity to work with this team. You all know me. I'm here to represent the community. We want to make sure that the community concerns are implemented in this agreement, and I look forward to moving forward. If there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to respond to, but other than that, happy to be a part of this team.
Thank you, Dr. Bailey. I'm very pleased to see that you're a part of the team. Let's go and open this up to the members of the council for questions. And any questions for Mr. Striker, for Mr. Greenwood, or Dr. Bailey? Counselor, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, Mr. Bailey, thank you for also being yourself available to this team. You'll be representing anyone in particular or yourself?
Just a private consultant at this point in time, sir.
So at this point, you're not, you're not hired by, maybe you want to, this is my right there. At this point, you're not working for the University of Mexico or anyone else?
I've been retired for two years from state government, so this is an opportunity for me to get back to the community like I've been doing for the last 40 years.
Thank you, and I'm glad for a long time. Now, I'd like to ask, a lot has been made about the monitor and not rushing into choosing the monitor, but I'd like to revisit or revisit the process for choosing that monitor. And that'll be negotiated between the administration and DOJ, yourselves and DOJ. What is the process?
The provisions in the agreement state that the parties choose the monitor collectively. We really envision in this agreement a high level of continuing engagement between the city and the monitor and the Department of Justice. We even call for monthly meetings. So we committed in the agreement not to just cast it open and let a court pick a monitor. We agreed to work, to do everything we can collectively for the parties to jointly select that monitor.
If I may just interject a little, would you, as quickly describe who the parties are?
Sure. The parties are the city of Albuquerque and the United States, more specifically. The parties are the city of Albuquerque and the United States.
But we're not going to be part of it.
You're, you're part of the party. You're, you are the legislative body that is the governing body of the city of Albuquerque, which is a party.
So will you be present at the discussion in the choosing of the monitor?
The process, what we've done, President Sanchez and Counselor Cardunio, what we've done in the agreement is commit to that joint selection and issued a request for information that's gone out nationally, that will gather all of that information. All of those applications from monitor candidates will be published. It will be subject to public records disclosure, and it will be available to every member of council as well. So yes, we respect your vote.
But I want to be sure that people understand that when the term "city" is used, that the city is very specific, and that is the administration, as opposed to the city, which includes nine elected officials that only part of that process.
You will be part of the, Mr. President and Counselor Cardunio, you are part of the process because ultimately.
Please hold your comments.
Ultimately, council, because you are the appropriators, council will have to vote to approve any contracting of the monitor. So you are absolutely involved in the process.
So our job will be to appropriate the funds to pay the monitor?
President Sanchez, Counselor Cardunio, yes.
But we won't be part of the process in choosing the monitor.
President Sanchez, Counselor Cardunio, I would like each of you to review and provide comments on all of the monitor applications that we received, each of them.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify what it meant by "part." Go ahead, I'm sorry. Do you have anything to add to that? I have a couple other questions, but I yield a floor to anyone else.
Go ahead, please. Any questions?
Well, the only other question I have is also, we've been hearing a lot about on-body recording systems, and I assume that includes both recording, meaning audio, and video, or digital video. How is that going to be implemented? I read a lot about how we're going to make sure that the cameras are working, that they're well-oiled, you know, they turn on and off, and the officers will be required to make sure that that is, that recording device is working at the outset of their duty day. But it doesn't say anything about if they don't do it, what would happen.
Mr. President, Counselor Cardunio, the agreement deals with on-body recording systems in a pretty comprehensive way, and it does include the cameras, whether the cameras are chest mount, lapel mount, head mount, helmet mount, the audio-only recording devices as well. The city has a lot of different platforms, and, and the city is engaged in a comprehensive study to look at those policies and practices and how those devices are currently being used. Before you can implement a truly uniform disciplinary policy, you have to standardize on your platforms, and you have to have all officers receive the same equipment and the same type of training so that you could have a standard disciplinary policy that fits within their matrix.
And, Mr. President, I understand that, and I fully agree that we shouldn't be having somebody ride a stagecoach with somebody else in a Ferrari or whatever. Those are very different. That's not the issue. What I wanted to know and maybe even be highlighted here is some sort of matrix or best practices throughout the country, or some that people have come up with, to make sure that if someone does not turn on the camera, let's assume that they're all the same type, and everybody's been trained on how to do it, that if they don't turn on the camera, what is the discipline and what is the matrix of disciplines to be adhered to that?
President Sanchez, Counselor Cardunio, the standard is really progressive discipline in best practices nationally, that there's progressive discipline for violations of departmental policy, and that's, that's consistent with what APD is doing now. The agreement clearly says if an incident is required to be recorded by the departmental policy and an officer chooses or somehow does not record, the officer has to articulate the reasons why. So an officer can't suddenly come up with missing video without an explanation. There should always be video or very, very strong reason why.
And, Mr. President, I agree that that is in the report. What I don't see, I haven't been able to find, is almost progressive discipline, that what that progressive discipline is, and it's nowhere in here mentioned in the report that I've been able to locate. And I think that at one point or another, we need to, not necessarily get into the reason telling the chief or whoever's going to be doing that how to do it, but at least what are the mechanisms for disciplining someone?
Mr. President, Counselor Cardunio, the agreement is silent on that because that's exactly what the city currently does with progressive discipline. And until you have a uniform platform, you really can't change that. You can't treat officers or discipline one officer for an use of equipment that didn't work and somebody else differently. But that progressive discipline is, is current part of APD policy.
But right now, there's no reference in the section on on-body recording systems that references that. And I think it should be something that should be placed in here, you know, if that's an amendment that we need to make or how we need to get to that place so that people understand that if we have a very good progressive system of discipline, that that would be incorporated in all aspects of discipline for all things ignored. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. This is an executive communication, so I do not believe that we have the authority to amend this agreement.
Mr. President, I would be very, very unhappy having to agree to something that we have, asking, why me?
We have our city attorney to address that issue.
Mr. President, I'll call Mr. Melendez up here, but that is, that is in our rules. We can vote in his favor or against.
Correct.
So, Mr. President.
Counselor Cardunio?
And I'm here for Mr. Melendez. But any amendments or corrections or conditions that anyone might have are moot because they cannot be amended.
Mr. Melendez, if you want to answer that question.
Mr. President, Counselor Cardunio, the council's authority is, is always, is, when an agreement comes down, the court of executive communication, the mayor, as Mr. Simone stated, the council's authority is limited to voting for or against the agreement. That doesn't necessarily mean that the council doesn't have a policy choice or a conscience on that, that would feel about that question, but procedurally, it's consistent with our rules and our past application of those rules that councils have approved or disapproved.
Are there any other questions? Counselor Willis and then Counselor Betman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Greenwood, I wanted to ask about Section 106, starting on page 42, crisis intervention, and specifically, part D of that section, which is, here would be here, page 48, crisis prevention, which goes into considerable detail about the assignment of new staff or new officers and detectives to the crisis intervention unit and the coast, really two entities that already exist in APD. And one of the comments that we heard later was that there was a concern, and I, on the face of it, I share a concern, that our police officers, whether well-trained or not, are, if they're not mental health professionals, true mental health professionals, it's great for them to have the training, and I fully agree that they need that training. But we're in the midst of some work in the community, as you know, and this was also discussed with, with the Department of Justice and the US Attorney, that, that is really taking a hard look at the needs in terms of behavioral health in the entire community. And a lot of that effort is focused on not having law enforcement being the first, in some instances at least, not always being the first encounter with someone receiving a behavioral health crisis. At the same time, I recognize, you know, and the agreement actually states at the opening of that sub-section, the Division of Utilized Coast to See You to follow up directly with chronicity homeless individuals and individuals with a known mental illness who have a history of law enforcement encounters. And let's face it, a lot of the homeless and a lot of people with mental and behavioral problems have had law enforcement encounters, many times very minor ones, very much ones, other times perhaps more concerning and serious ones. So there's a, there's a fine line there that I think that we're dealing with as a community and that we're going to have to deal with in enforcing this and moving forward with our, our parallel efforts with regard to behavioral health services and support. our, our parallel efforts with regard to behavioral health services and support, that we employ some of the suggestions that that task force has already made, the behavioral health task force, of having civilian engagement teams that would work as well. So how does this fit with that? Are we going to get, are we going to get hamstrung by this into tracking every person who's had, you know, spit on the sidewalk or something, that might have a, have a behavioral health issue or a history of homelessness?
Mr. President, Counselor Bennet, I'm glad you asked this question. I think it's important because behavioral health and mental health issues permeate this agreement. One of the biggest challenges in policing nationally today is interactions with people who are experiencing behavioral or mental health or emotional crises. And this agreement does several things that, again, leverage the strength that the city already has, recognizes the process that you've engaged in. This expressly creates a mental health advisory committee, which should...
Can you disagree with for one moment? Mr. Nemenski, if you want to have a conversation, would you please take that out to the lobby?
I'm sorry?
If you want to have a conversation, please take that out to the lobby. We're trying to listen to our questions being addressed.
I don't speak loudly, just whispering.
Thank you, Mr. President. The city has been engaged in this process with a, with a behavioral health task force, and we leverage that strength by recognizing and requiring the agreement, the creation of a mental health advisory committee, to evaluate different types of responses and different types of solutions. And if you, you'll look in the section on training for this section of the agreement, you'll also see that for the first time, dispatchers, the people who are the first point of contact when somebody calls 911. Dispatchers are going to receive 20 hours of mental health and behavioral health training to help them identify indications that the person who's being called about, the subject of the call for assistance, that that person may require a different type of response than simply a uniform patrol car showing up with uniform armed officers, but that other people may well be more appropriate first responders as well, as long as public safety is protected. So it's, it's all there. And the flexibility of the agreement is, it allows us to do exactly that. It allows us to modify existing practices in cooperation with our counterparts at DOJ in the agreement of the monitor. So that's, that's all, that's all a possibility of this agreement.
And I think this, the task force that's been, that's been working, it can be a resource and can be perhaps a subset of that task force to become this, this committee that's referred to in the agreement. And I think it's an important point about the 911 dispatchers, they are the first line. That's a, that's a tough call for one of those folks to make. You know, maybe a parallel system, I think things may have to be developed where, where the police are on call for, for the call as well as these civilian engagement teams and, because one or the other may not be the appropriate first response. But that's a, that's a, it's a fine detail, but it's a critical detail of how this part of the agreement should see to affairs.
Counselor Gibson and then Counselor Bennet.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a couple of things along those same lines. I really appreciated the, the detail, the training for behavioral health, mental health situations, for dispatchers, you know, people who take themselves. One question that came up, oh, in particular, I just wanted to make a note that on paragraph, within paragraph 125, it talks about during basic crisis intervention, that the trainers will be looking to identify officers of a special aptitude in this area so they can be placed as a, perhaps a first responder or one of the, the teams. I think, I think that's a great idea, wonderful. But here's my question. The people providing training for behavioral health and mental health issues, there's really nothing that, in here that I can see any qualifications, certifications. Would this be a regular trainer from, from the academy doing this, or is there any thought or conversation?
Mr. President, Counselor Gibson, what the agreement does for training is it sets out requirements in subject areas. Some of that training will be internal, some of that training by necessity will have to come from outside sources. And mental health training in particular is something that's pretty specialized. It requires mental health professionals who can do this type of training to work with the department to make sure, not just that everybody receives that 40 hours or the dispatchers get their 20, but to help identify the officers who really do have skills and aptitude in this area. So this is, the training is not at all internal. In fact, in this area, it's mostly not. But the training will be something that the parties, again, the city, the Department of Justice, and the monitor will collectively evaluate that training to make sure that it is consistent with the requirements of the agreement.
And one more?
Go on, proceed.
Several places in here, it talks about at the chief's discretion. And so after I read that a few times, I started wondering about that. Could the police, police chief have the ability to override the monitor?
Mr. President, Counselor Gibson, the phrase "at the chief's discretion" was used principally in two areas in the agreement. It's where, the two areas that are most critical to the success of the implementation of this agreement by APD, that is Internal Affairs, because the Internal Affairs Unit for the first time will be investigating serious uses of force, and it is in the new team that is being created, the Implementation Unit. The Implementation Unit is really, it's a planning process that will really have to oversee how every component of this agreement is complied with, whether we've trained to it, measured it, achieved it internally. So because those two units are so critical to the, they're mission critical to the success of this agreement for the city, the chief has to have the ability to staff those two units with people that he or she identifies as the most trustworthy, having the most subject matter expertise, and having the ability to really rise to that challenge. Those can't be passively assigned.
And one more question, a short question with a short answer. Oh, yes, data. Enormous amount of data, I spoke to that earlier. I noticed the chief is in here, is, my question is, is it, does APD currently have a plan for data collection, you know, organization, data entry? Have, do they have any plan to address this? This, I think this is an enormous...
I think that's a great question, and the, the simple answer to it is, is that the chief and, and the police department are currently engaged in the purchase of new technology that is going to make the collection of that data both efficient and effective for the agency, as well as for satisfying this document. The technology that they, they have selected is the very best that's out in the market right now. And not just best because the company says so, it's best because it has been proven that way through employment in police agencies across the United States and actually outside the United States. So we're very encouraged by the work that's already being done by the chief and his staff in terms of data collection, in terms of selecting technology for this project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bennet.
I'm going to try to ask my questions really quick. So under the use of force, how is this different from the current SOP on force investigations? It seems very similar, and then I'm just going to ask like a three-pronged question. And then use of force, use of force that does not rise to the level of serious use of force or that do not indicate a paracriminal conduct by an officer will be reviewed by the chain of command. How is, how is that determined? And then lastly, for serious uses of force, what defines serious?
Mr. President, Counselor Bennet, another grady area for a question, because this is very, very different from past practice for APD. Previous practice, when there was a use of force, was really just asking the question, is it justified or is it not justified? The process that the department has started to engage in, since Chief Eaton became chief, and which is memorialized in the agreement, really does two different things. It pushes responsibility for supervision to start where it really needs to, which is the frontline supervisor, the sergeant. So the sergeants will have responsibility for close and, a close and effective supervision of the people under their command. But those sergeants will also be, for the first time, really conducting true investigations of use of force, rather than just checking a box or saying, yes, it was justified, no, it was not. And the provisions in the agreement regarding investigations of serious use of force, that's outside of the chain of command. It's done by Internal Affairs, and then it goes to the Force Review Board, and ultimately to the, which is headed by the Assistant Chief, and ultimately to the chief. That is a way so that serious uses of force are not just dealt with in an area of command, but become a departmental-wide initiative so that there are not secrets and there are not silos based upon geography. So everything goes that way.
So what's determining serious, what defines serious use of force? So what, what are some of the characteristics that's not outlined in here? Is that going to be determined later?
Mr. President, Counselor Bennet, it's, serious use of force is specifically defined in the definition section of the agreement. It means all uses of lethal force, all critical firearms discharges, all uses of force that result in serious physical injury or related hospitalization, all head, neck, and throat strikes with an object or neck holds, all uses of force that result in a use of loss of consciousness, all canine bites, more than two applications of an electronic control weapon or baton, any strike, blow, kick, ECW application or similar use of force against restrained subjects, or, as I said, it's more than three strikes with a baton. So it's defined not just by the level of force, but by the quantity of force. It's a specifically defined term.
Thank you. Mr. President, thank you. I just wanted to ask a couple more things about APD as best as possible. So Counselor Bennet, I stepped out, but he asked some questions regarding the Mental Health Response Advisory Committee, that is going to be set up within six months? Is this going to consist of some of the task force members? That may have been asked, I think is...
Mr. President, Counselor Bennet, that's permitted under the agreement because the city's already been engaged in that process. The agreement requires the city to have that mental health advisory committee. It doesn't say where they come from. And again, there should be no reason why, there shouldn't be a lot of synergy between that group or even be a subset of the existing group.
And then, Mr. President, so you have city contracted mental health professionals. How many? And who's going to determine, who's going to determine how many there will be?
Mr. President, Counselor Bennet, the agreement requires there to be the right number. And what the department currently estimates is that they, they need 12 people in this capacity, but in terms of mental health contracted professionals, there's a psychiatrist who's currently used. The staffing assessment will help us determine what the right staffing level is for those provisions too.
Mr. President, so then again, under the crisis intervention, it says APD shall need a sufficient number of crisis intervention certified responders who are especially trained officers across the department who retain their normal duty responsibilities. Not clear on how many, again, who's going to make that determination?
Mr. President, Counselor Bennet, that will be, that also will be addressed in the staffing study. The goal is to have sufficient numbers of those enhanced level trained responders so that there are always people on duty on every shift throughout the city. That's the, that's the goal. We have to determine what that number looks like, but they, they have a pretty good idea of what the number is likely to be. Rather than commit to this specific number in the agreement and find out it's wrong, staffing study is really going to help us get there too.
Mr. President, one quick. So under early intervention systems, within nine months of the effect of the APD shall revise and update its early intervention system, who is this now? It's a, we're going to, who is, who's this now? Who is this with the APD?
Mr. President, Counselor Bennet, an early intervention system in most agencies, it's an integrated set of software that works with your existing Internal Affairs system, and it's designed to measure certain types of thresholds for conduct and incidents so that it, it will identify an officer to her or his supervisor for follow-up. Too many sick days, too many absences on a Monday or a Friday, too many vehicle accidents within a certain amount of time, too much use of force within a finite amount of time. That's what an early intervention system does.
Yeah, and I apologize, I meant to ask, where is it now? Where is this located now?
Well, it's, it's a system, and it's part of what the department is starting to implement through this best-in-class Internal Affairs and EIS integrated system. So that's something, it, it will go live far before nine months. Because it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be possible, it shouldn't be possible to have a dozen or two dozen Internal Affairs cases or civilian complaints and nobody knows about it. That's, this is exactly the sort of thing that an EIS is designed, designed to flag and designed to have thresholds for.
Actually, actually, there are members of the, member of, members of the department that are in Florida this week being trained in the operation of that technology for, for Internal Affairs and for EIS system, and we're hopeful that it will be able to go online as early as February of 2015. So in the earlier future, we should start to see at least parts of this system being placed.
So it isn't. Because see, in the report, it just says that they will revise and update, and I didn't know that we have one currently, so, and you're saying that it's going to go live, so maybe there's just not...
Actually, a system has been being developed for several months now. Chief Eaton and his staff have taken the initiative before this was even required to be examining different systems that are in the marketplace and those that have been the most successful, and they've settled on one that we believe is extraordinary.
So we don't have one to revise or update, we're actually purchasing the software?
Mr. President, Counselor Bennet, the short answer to that question was, prior to the last couple of months, the review of the system in the last seven months? No.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Counsel Vice President Jones, and then we'll go back to Counselor Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick, I want to go back to something that Counselor Gerdunio said, and I think probably can be helpful with this, and that is, there is not in this agreement anything about the discipline if the cameras, lapel cameras aren't on. I understand that part, I'm not going to question that, but my question is, in the past, it has not been terribly consistent, how they're used or what happened. What is the process set up to set the disciplinary action to make sure that it is standardized and enforced? Who will be doing it and how will it be?
The, the, the system that is going to be put in place, or that is being put in place, is obviously going to start with the establishment of a policy and procedure that can be applied to a standardized platform and the technology. The city will have to, have to decide on a platform that is going to be issued to the officers and then train to that platform. Once the training is completed, a policy and procedure will be put in place, and there will be the availability for supervisors inside the organization to audit the use of these cameras. So we're going to have to wait till an incident occurs to see whether or not the camera systems are being used. There will actually be an ongoing audit being used so we can determine if, when, and how officers are using those systems. If they are using it as designed, that's good, and we will make notice of that. If they are not using it, then that's not good. And certainly, attention will be provided to those officers, and it could be in the form of training, it could be in the form of discipline. It's, it's actually, it all depends on the circumstances that will be discovered, and obviously the explanation of the officer for why he or she is or is not using a camera system or the, the on-body recording system as it is designed to be used and in compliance with the... and in compliance with the agency's policies and procedures.
Counselor Gibson.
Mr. President, and let me go just a little bit further. I think I understand what you're, what you're saying, and how will we fight? Who will be responsible? Will it be the chief, will it be the EDA, will it be the monitor? Have something to say about this? Hopefully, it's no kind.
Ultimately, quite frankly, ultimately, the chief is responsible for the operations, but the chief is going to push down that duty and responsibility all the way down to frontline supervisors. One of the checks and balances systems is that when there is an issue that does occur, or complaints filed to use of force, some type of serious auto accident, whatever it is that's out there, if that activity that the officer was engaged in should have been recorded, that recording itself will be part of the reporting system. So say we have a use of force out there. It's not just to go and, excuse me, to go out and take a look and investigate and write up a report. There's actually a requirement that the recording of that incident be reviewed by the supervisor and addressed specifically by the supervisor. And then the system is set up so that supervisors' next level of command will have to review not just the incident itself, but also ensure that that supervisor did everything he or she was supposed to do in terms of investigating and reviewing the activity. That goes all the way up to the police chief, and then ultimately, the monitor will be responsible for taking a look at all of these instances and determining whether or not the agency is in compliance with these, with these requirements of this system. So as the agency is going to be responsible for implementation, and then the monitor and the monitoring team will be responsible for making sure that the agency is doing what they say they do. And that is all going to be documented in a very public report. Initially, three times a year for the first two years. So it will be a big news item when these reports are issued by the monitor.
Mr. President, Counselor Jones, the critical paragraph in the agreement, I think, that really reaches the point you're making, is paragraph 228, which states as follows. Officers who wear on-body recording systems shall be required to articulate on camera or in writing their reason if they fail to record an activity that is required by APD policy to be recorded. Intentional or otherwise unjustified failure to activate an on-body recording system when required by APD policy shall subject the officer to discipline. Not may, shall.
Counselor Gibson. Just a little bit more about on-body recording. And I appreciate that, the fact that we need uniformity throughout, throughout APD and all of the officers. But because that has been such an issue for us, I think it would have been more comfortable to see language in here that requires it, whatever it may be, for all interactions with the public. And so a little discipline in that was not there. The other thing is, getting back to the, to data and this, and this image in my mind about a mountain of paper that these deployed to a system. It would have been nice to have, in fact, I'm surprised that APD is not here. A few exceptions noted. But, and without getting into the weeds too much, as far as the, how are we going to do this? Or, you know, whatever will become of that, it would have been nice to have APD here. Great stories on Monday night, ironically. But anyway, so there's a comment, sorry that APD is here, not here, and to answer some of the specific questions that we are posing. And about the on-body recording. Is there, can you maybe talk about why it's not in here? That, that recordings will not be required for all interactions with the public?
Mr. President, Counselor Gibson, the section in the agreement on on-body recording systems recognizes that the city is currently engaged in a study with University of Mexico to evaluate a couple of different things about how current video equipment is used. Who's using them, when are they using them, how are they using them? Are they turning them off, are they leaving them on? Is it too much, is it too little? And that, that is reflected in the agreement. And that's why the agreement requires the parties, after that assessment is done, to come back and give community input on what the proper policies for, for the use of this important safety equipment really is.
Can I have a couple of questions? And I want to go back to the federal monitor, Mr. Williams. And I think you stated that the city council will approve the monitor that is selected, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. President.
And if we don't just approve that monitor, just say, "For the five votes, you know, objection to the monitor retired," then what takes place?
Then, Mr. President, what would happen is, there wouldn't be a monitor chosen by the parties, and each party would then submit three names to the federal judge who will oversee this, and it would be completely within the court's discretion at that point to pick a monitor.
So basically, if we don't approve it, then it would be up to the courts to make that, that run?
I guess so, Mr. President.
And how will the application process start? Because I think that the report states that a federal monitor will be chosen in 60 days. Is that from the day that is filed with the courts, federal courts?
Mr. President, what the agreement requires is, we use the very ambitious date for what we call the effective date of the agreement, so that it will start the clock ticking for all the deadlines and all implementation. The effective date as the agreement, that will be the threshold for all of the dates, is the day the agreement is signed and then filed with the court. And at that point, that's where our 60 days starts. We got a little bit of a head start, because the request for information went out the same day the agreement was, was announced. And it's already widely circulated among policing professional groups.
Thank you, is there any other questions? Counsel Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. And continue on, I used the idea of the monitor, the compliance reviews. Those, the monitor is responsible for writing the compliance reviews that states the progress of where the department is, and I guess the progress of following the agreement. What do those, I guess the reviews come to? They come to the administration, or they, or they...
Mr. President, Counsel Lewis, those are public. So when there's an assessment by the monitor of compliance with the conditions of the agreement, that'll be something that's issued to the parties and will be public. So we'll know in the first two years of the agreement, every four months, and then afterwards, every six months, we'll get those compliance assessments. One thing I especially wanted to point out, this hasn't been done in any of the other agreements yet. And it really is a first in this model, and it really should help make this agreement a model for other communities. It has a two-and-a-half-year comprehensive reassessment provision built into the agreement. That means, notwithstanding all the work that everyone will have done for implementation, and all the reports back and forth with the monitor, that in year two and a half, we take a comprehensive look from top to bottom of what's going on with APD, and what's, what's consistent with the settlement agreement, and what areas still need some attention. And that is designed so that we have this constant conversation, so that we're, we're not, there won't be any surprises. The goal is to be at full compliance in two years, for an exit at four. But in two and a half years, we have the ability to hit reset if things are not in full compliance the way we expect them to be. And that's really, that, that is to avoid having a situation where the department can't come into compliance, or situations in some of these other communities where a five-year agreement turns out to be 12, or 13, or 22.
Your thoughts on the expectation, and I guess you could just say this, the expectation of that monitor would be that city would come to full compliance within two years? That's what the monitor is going to be looking for? And I guess, you know, if the expectation is two years, then we have a monitor that would be, you know, looking, you know, looking for the department complying with everything on here, and that's what they're, unless there's something just, I guess, that we just cannot comply to, or... But, I mean, those reports, I think, regularly are going to be with the intent that if they're not, if they're not complying right now, that we would be complying shortly, and we would hit that mark of two years.
Mr. President, Counsel Lewis, it's even better than that, because we engage, we're engaged in a real partnership. The administration, council, the police department, and our counterparts and colleagues at the Department of Justice. We're going to continue the conversation, so we're not just waiting for monitor reports. We meet with them at least every month. So the monitor, there should be no surprises in any monitor's report. And that is designed so we can take constant, small corrective steps if necessary. What the agreement contemplates is not just hitting full compliance, our goal at two years, but then really sustain compliance, that's keeping in compliance. It's harder to come into compliance than to stay there. But, and that's why the goal, it's ambitious, but it's achievable. And it is something that the parties are really committed to in this agreement. And that's how we achieve it.
Counsel Lewis. Thank you, Mr. President, I'll be right back, because I just want a clarification on what Counsel President asked of all that is, if there is no agreement to be built by Counselors to who's been brought forward by both parties, do you say there will be three, three names that need to be submitted to the court, the court will then choose from those six?
Mr. President, Counsel Garde, yes, that's the process. That's a, that's the fallback provision of the agreement. And candidly, in cities where that's happened, it doesn't work out so well. So it really does be with us to work with our colleagues at the DOJ to find the right person and the right team to be monitored for this very important agreement.
Right, and, Mr. President, I guess that also lifts up the fact that if all of us were going in, making the decision, it would be much better than coming to us with sort of a done deal idea, and us having to, well, listen, send it to the courts. And I don't think that, as you just mentioned, is a good idea. But it's an even better idea to have participation on some level, so that the monitor is someone that this body, or all people that are part of the process, to agree on. And rather than be surprised by someone who, for whatever reasons, we just cannot support for five of us, Counsel Lewis, then we're back to a vast situation.
Mr. President, Counsel Garde, you, as you know, I have briefed, and we have briefed, and worked with members of council and your staff throughout this process. And we certainly contemplate that throughout the selection and evaluation process for the monitor, that you would receive the same briefing, the same input, the same ability to evaluate and look at and evaluate those candidates. So you will receive all of that information as well. And it's a two-way conversation.
Mr. President, so your intent is to make sure that this monitor, or team of monitors, is not a surprise to anyone?
Mr. President, Counsel Garde, you, yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. This time, we will end the questioning, and if Counselors wish to make a closing statement, they can do so this time, after their closing statements, and everyone is done speaking. Then we will have the roll call. Counsel Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselors, this has really been a long process. But I think we are very far down the road when the DOJ came in. And I, and I think that the city council has done a lot of good work from that moment on. I think the behavior, the Behavior Health Initiative that has been, the whole council has been involved in, along with the county commission, along with the state legislature and the state agencies. I think that that is going to really change the way that the behavior health is seen in the city and in the state. I think that the Civilian Police Oversight Agency, what this, this council has passed in the Police Oversight Board, is going to really make lots of changes in the way we do things. And I know that we just found out we have about 80 applicants for the Police Oversight Board, which means that the, that the citizens of Albuquerque are very much involved in, on that. And I also was very impressed with the Department of Justice coming in, and how they worked, not only with the administration and the police department, and how impressed with the police department, how far they've come, and how some of the initiative that they already put into place. But I was really impressed with the Department of Justice and how they met with the neighborhood groups. I had a group of my coalition from District Four come in and meet with them, and they were very responsive in answering the questions that my constituents had. And so it's been a long process. I know we still have a very long process left. But I really think, from the day DOJ came in, that we are very far down the road.
Thank you, Counsel Witter. Thank you, partners. Counsel Betten.
Well, just briefly with regard to, you know, the role of the council in the discussions leading up to this agreement. The US Attorney's Office and the Department of Justice were, I think, pretty clear last front that they were going to be issued, and this would be exactly the issue. And that's the way they normally operate in some of the investigations across the country. So that was, that's something that was clear upfront. And it doesn't mean I was satisfied with that, but that's, that's the way they laid it out upfront. And they were open to us, we did meet with them, I think many of us met with them in their, during that period of, from the time that the, their initial letter was released until, up until the present. And that's the nature of our, our government, our city government. And they, they're not going to be able to negotiate with the group of nine. That's kind of the way it is. And it is disappointing to me as well, Counsel Gibson, that I don't see the chief here tonight. And, and that the mayor wasn't able to stick around and listen to the public comment or to this debate. But, but nonetheless, I think that's a result really of, and it's an indicator that we're kind of just here as a, I'm not sure what you want to call it. Hey, it is a word, rubber stamp. But we're being asked to rubber stamp, basically, this agreement that was negotiated by others. And, but I do appreciate the access that we've had to the DOJ and the US Attorney. And, and I'm confident we will continue to. And I think it's, it's on us, to some extent, to continue to do that. And also, just speaking of the mysteries of mine, we might have a role in the appointment of this committee, the Behavioral Health Advisory Committee. We've already taken a step forward in that. We should stay on that issue, we should stay on top of that. And obviously, we'll be staying on top of how the police, State Police Oversight Agency rolls out. But we have a limited role in this, you know, this particular agreement. We have to just acknowledge that, and I just want the public to understand.
Counsel Lewis, then Counsel Garde.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I think we can all go back to 2011 on this council, where some of the discussions regarding the DOJ, and some of the first, I think, talk, I think it was this council that reached that suggestion. And I, for one, was supportive of that, and thought that, that was, you know, at the time, you know, even though it was something that was early on, I think, in this, this crisis, I think, that we've been through, that because of the distrust, and because there, because of the, even the, I guess, you know, some of the pending issues and challenges that we saw, it was important that if there were some dark clauses, that we opened up those closed doors and we shined a light on it. So for, to me, it was, for me, it was something of a transparency issue from the very beginning. But it was this council, I think, that, along with the people in this community, you know, that first began to express a need, and ultimately, this council will be making a formal request for a Department of Justice investigation. You know, that those findings came out, official review, we spent a lot of months discussing those. This council, I think, has, you know, we have our ear, I think, closer than any, than, I think, anywhere in city government, you know, to the people in this city. You know, and not only from these meetings here, and I know sometimes it seems like in these meetings that we have to have some order, and we have to, you know, go about... order, and we have to, you know, go about things in a way that's more formal, but this council, and individuals I know on this council, including me, have had a lot of conversations with people that have been concerned, or have shared ideas, and certainly wanted to just, you know, to just, I guess, bid, you know, and I've had a lot of personal conversations with people, my doors have always been open, and sometimes people think that we're, you know, I guess, hard to reach, or, you know, in those, I just don't think that's the case. I mean, you know, I heard Counselor Winter at a meeting last night, he had a cell phone, I do that, and no other, this council would give out a personal cell phones to people, to large groups of people, individuals, and so we take phone calls, and we have meetings, and so, I guess I've mentioned that to say that that has been a very part of this process, and us listening, and being close to, you know, the people, their concerns, and now we look forward to ensuring that these, that this agreement is followed, and that we comply with these things, and I think it's very important, certainly, in many ways, the work continues, and certainly, but, at the same time, I think we have a clear direction to reform and a little change, and turn it to a new chapter for this department, certainly for our city.
Counselor Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. President. And for me, not unlike Counselor Lewis, this started a long time ago, when a lot of folks in the community came to me and said, you know, what's going on, why are we having such trouble with the police department? And I started asking questions of the IRO at the present time, or at that time, Mr. Deaton, you know, as a mayor, and there was a great reluctance, and in fact, there was a lot of pushback, not wanting to really talk about it, because it's privacy issues, it's personnel issues, and we can't talk about those things in public. So that, and I think, gave a lot of the community who've been talking to us, angst, and said, you know, we need to do something. And I go back to what Counselor Lewis said, and I remember, in fact, I was walking around the plaza on a Saturday, when I got a phone call from Counselor Lewis, and Counselor Lewis said, "Would you continue with me to bring forward some legislation?" And we did, it passed, it was retoken, and then it was not written. So we've been doing this a long time. We also have been very close, as Counselor Lewis has said, to the nerve point in the community, and we are able to then respond to folks out in the public, and I'm not ashamed, in fact, I'm proud, saying that I have been at a lot of the rallies and marches, because I believe that, still do, and if things go awry, and things don't go as well as I think they should go, and the community comes back to me and says, you know, if things aren't working, I will join them in any way that I think is necessary to make sure that the public's being listened to. So I want this report, and this process, to work, but it has to work for everyone, and not just those people who think they own it, because the community owns this report. They're the ones that made sure that this went through the whole process, making sure that the DOJ came in. The DOJ was reluctant, I think, in beginning to do anything until things got settled, some, I hate to say this, but some smoke and mirrors were thrown up, and there was kind of tacit satisfaction, but obviously, the problems continued. I don't want those problems to continue even after this report. I want to make sure that this report is what it is, and it does what it says it's going to do, and that the community gains respect for what they do, and the police department gains the respect of the community, who we represent. We are the representatives of the community, and we're the ones that they come to. And if we're not upfront with wanting to help them, then I think we're failing, I think we're failing the folks who are working diligently every time. I think that we have a good document, but I want to be sure that it works well for everybody. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Penney.
Well, unlike Counselor Lewis and Counselor Gardner, this is my first year on city council, it's been a year now that I've been elected, and coming on board, and one of the first things that gets is this whole thing with the APD, and it was, it's been a trying year, but I think it's, we've come to a good place in terms of the settlement agreement, and, you know, I agree with Counselor Betten, you know, I think we played a limited role, but when you in advance that what our role was, you know, I just really want to commend, you know, the family members who lost loved ones, you know, I think this is something that's going to be a tremendous healing process for them, and the community members who've come out and kind of made and held people accountable for what they felt was wrong in the community, you know, there's a lot of good people out there, and they're, you know, touting or shouting the voices, being the voice for the community, Mr. Gomez, Mr. Alice, Mr. Torres, Diana Vargas, I think she's a tremendous community organizer, I remember her from when she was a little girl in the neighborhood, Ronnie's worked at Alamos Elementary School, you know, so she's turned out to be a fighting lady. Mr. Angelo Lucilio, he lost a very close friend, you know, and he's here because he's not trying to, I don't believe that they're trying to fight with the APD, or fight with anybody in particular, I believe that they're here because they felt that there was something unjust that had happened, and that they're here to be the voice for those people that aren't here any longer. You know, there's other folks, the community members, Roger Mipelson, who's been here throughout, really touting and talking about the community perspective, and of course, Ms. Jennifer Ott, you know, she's been here, and she's spoken on behalf of APD, and I commend her for that, too, you know, took a lot of courage to come out here and do that, you know, when some of the stronger voices were in opposition of APD. And I want Stephanie Lopez, you know, the APD president for APOA, I think she's just done a tremendous job speaking out on behalf of APD, because, you know, they, I think we have to support our officers, I think that we have a tremendous force, is there some flaws, was there some flaws, and is there some flaws absolutely, and that's why we're dealing with this situation, but, you know, she was here to be the voice for police officers, and I, you know, I really congratulate them, they were the ones that were here also, trying to keep, you know, decorum here at city council, and, you know, through the protests, they were out there as well, and, you know, and I'm sure, you know, some of these things that were said about them were very careful as well, and, you know, so I want to thank the men and women of the police department, and then, of course, the city councilors, you know, like Counselor Betten stated, at city council, we've kind of, you know, have played a limited role, there's certain things we can and can't do, but, you know, everyone sitting here and listening to the community, I think you guys have done a tremendous job in just really trying to identify ways that we can contribute, you know, with the task force, and with the mental health, and, you know, other legislation that's being pushed, and trying to reform APD. I think I'm proud to say that I'm here with you all, and of course, to the administration, you know, I know it's been a difficult time as well, you know, trying to kind of stir through all this, and, you know, we've all been kind of confused in what to do, and I hope that this settlement agreement will set us in the right path in terms of really being able to heal our community. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Penney. I'd like to make a couple of closing remarks, and first, I would like to say that I'm very disappointed that the chief is not here this evening. I think this is a very important meeting, though, and we were voting on retention bonuses, we had many of the upper commanders here, talking about the retention bonuses and supporting that, but this, I believe, is a very important meeting tonight, with the council, we are playing a limited role in what is being done here, but again, Mr. Zaman met with us, because he was basically working with Mr. Greenwood and Mr. Stryker, and I had several meetings with Mr. Zaman on what was going on with the DOJ, and I want to personally thank our U.S. Attorney David Martinez for his work and his role, because they did reach out to the community. This process, as Counselor Gardner and Counselor Lewis have said, went back beyond the two years that the investigation has been going on, and Mr. Martinez opened the doors to the members of the public, there were several public meetings, they also opened the door to listen to the police officers of rank and file, and it's important that the community has buy-in. You know, this has to be a workable agreement that the police officers can also buy into. But again, we've faced some serious problems over the last few years, the Department of Justice began the investigation, and that was launched in November of 2012, so for two years, the U.S. Department of Justice has been here, reaching out to the community, talking to members of the council, because I had several meetings with the Department of Justice, and also, you know, working with our staff, and Mr. Greenwood and Mr. Stryker. I don't agree with everything in the agreement, but I think this is a step in the right direction. I believe that this is a historical moment in our city, and that we must entrust the men and women that serve our community in the Albuquerque Police Department to work with this agreement, to make our city of Albuquerque a safer place, and make the Albuquerque Police Department the best department in America, and I believe that we can do that with the people that we have working for the Albuquerque Police Department. They will have to make sacrifices, because they will have to buy into this agreement, and we, as a council, must provide the necessary dollars to make sure that we conform and comply with this settlement agreement. It will be filed with the courts, and this will be signed on November the 10th. Again, I would hope that some of the members of the public are invited to this signing, we will not be signed as members of the council, but I think we are taking the step in the right direction, and again, I think this is a defining moment, as U.S. Attorney David Martinez said, in the history of our city, that we work in collaboration with the community, and I'm very pleased to see that there's an issue regarding staffing that is in the findings, because I do not believe that we have enough men and women today working on the Albuquerque Police Department, and they're spread thin, I mean, they're responding to priority one calls all the time, they don't have enough men and women working on the streets of Albuquerque, and we are emphasizing community-based policing, but we must give them the tools and the manpower to make sure that they can, you know, have the reach out to the community, and provide community-based policing that we didn't have at one time. To me, this is one of the most important issues that I will vote on, and I am going to, at this time, ask for a roll call vote from members of the council before we close.
Mr. President, one final question, and that is, I heard a while ago that ECs obviously can't not amend, but is there a possibility for this report, and I don't know whether Mr. Greenwood or who would be able to answer that, but is it possible for going forward, if the monitor or someone goes to the monitor and says, "This is not working," that that could be changed, or is it cast in stone, and I don't know whether I've gotten that clear?
Mr. Greenwood. Mr. President, Counselor Gardner, the agreement specifically says that we can change its provisions if we find that some things aren't working, and it's built in a number of mechanisms that allow us to do that. So if something doesn't seem to be working out well for us in implementation, we have the ability, the parties, working with the monitor, to change that.
So, Mr. President, so, nothing to...